So, call to order our regular city council meeting and in accordance with the PA 254 of 2020, the members should identify their physical location by stating the county, city, township, or village and state from which he or she is attending the meeting remotely. Kelly Garrett from Lathrow Village, Michigan, Oakland County.
Bruce Cantor from Lathrow Village, Michigan, Oakland County.
Ian Ferguson, Lathrow Village, Michigan, Oakland County.
Salim Sadiq here, Lathrow Village, Michigan, Oakland County.
Thank you very much. I guess I did your job a little bit, Madam Clerk, didn't I?
No problem.
But you can do roll call.
I'll do roll call.
Thank you.
Roll call, Mayor Garrett.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Here.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Present.
And Councilmember Sadiq.
Here.
Madam Mayor, you have a quorum.
Did someone say something? Okay, I know invite everyone to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, someone wants to make the motion of approving the agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
It's been moved to second. Is there any questions? Hearing none, roll call please.
Roll call. Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
And Councilmember Sadiq.
Yes.
Motion carried for approval of the agenda.
Thank you. Next we have a presentation, which is so, it's wonderful to have received this regarding lifesaving award to Officer Keith Roberts. I will turn this over to our city manager to explain. Come off of mute Cheryl.
All right, I don't know if Chief McKee is here as well, I thought he was, but in any event, we're very pleased and proud to recognize Officer Keith Roberts for the lifesaving award, and I'll let him tell his own story of what happened.
Thank you, Dr. Mitchell. On that date and time, I was dispatched, or I heard dispatch state that there is a unresponsive unconscious male in the parking lot behind the Marathon Gas Station. They sent a couple of Southfield units. I happened to be right down the block from it, so I headed that way to preserve life if I needed to, and I found the male unconscious in the passenger seat of his vehicle with his friend who called 911, trying to shake him, trying to wake him up. I approached and I saw the male was all blue in the face, not breathing, and had a very faint pulse. At this time, I asked him if he does narcotics. He said, yeah, he just shot up. So I administered one dose of Narcan to his nostril. He did not wake him up. I started trying to wake him up, so that's when I pulled him out of the car, placed him on his back in case I had to do, start CPR. I administered another dose of Narcan to which he started gasping for breaths, so I got him breathing again, and he still wasn't conscious or alert, but he was breathing. So, got the pulse back, got his breathing back, and I started turning regular color, and then Southfield officers got there and gave me another shot of Narcan. So I gave him another one, and he started coming to, and then medics got there and administered an IV, and he woke up.
Person.
Pretty remarkable, and the recommendation from Sergeant Tackett indicated, there's my belief that because of Officer Roberts' quick thinking, his quick response, and his quick delivery of vital lifesaving efforts, that he has saved the citizen's life, citizen from dying of a narcotic overdose, as it is unknown how long his heart stopped and was not breathing. Officer Roberts arriving so quickly and administering Narcan may have been the defining factor of recovery. I believe Officer Roberts was exemplary in his duties and made our department shine. It was later discovered that the subject had overdosed on heroin. So, PS, Officer Roberts will need more Narcan.
Yes.
For sure.
Sounds like he's, that's awesome. I think that's great. That was a tremendous result.
Yeah, congratulations. It's just, you know, that's the second time, at least that I know of, of just absolutely exemplary, exemplary policing, you know. Last time it was on the national stage, but this time it was, it was just local, but it was great. You saved the guy's life, and that's awesome.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, really glad you were there. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you. Be safe.
I will. You guys good with me?
Yes.
Yeah, have a good day.
You're welcome to stay for the next two or three hours.
I appreciate everything.
All right, take care, Officer Roberts. Good job.
Thank you.
Um, next we're gonna have to go into the zoning board of appeals, so we would have adjourn the city council meeting.
I make a motion to adjourn the city council meeting.
And open.
Oh, and he made the motion, he needs a second.
And, and open is the, is the.
And, and open the ZBA.
Second.
Thank you. I'm calling to order the zoning boards of appeals. Roll call please.
Roll call, Mayor Garrett.
Present.
And you're still in Lathrow Village, huh?
My soul is here. Yes, Lathrow Village, Michigan, Oakland County.
Okay, Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Present, Lathrow Village, Michigan, Oakland County.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Present, Lathrow Village, Michigan, Oakland County.
And Councilmember Sadiq.
I'm here, Lathrow Village, Oakland County, Michigan.
Okay, you have a quorum.
Thank you. We need a motion for the approval of minutes for the zoning board of appeals from April 19th, 2021.
I'll make a motion to approve the April 19th, 2021 ZBA minutes.
Second.
Thank you. It's been approved in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Roll call, Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes, here.
Board Member Garrett.
Yes.
Board Member Cantor.
Yes.
Board Member Sadiq.
Yes.
Motion carry to accept the minutes of April 19th, 2021 of the ZBA zoning board of appeals meeting.
Thank you. Next we have the ZBA public hearing for 18129 Sunny Brook Avenue. Ms. Cheryl, I think it's Ms. Cheryl, yes.
Thank you. I was going to ask either Jill or Suzie to take this one, since it was a recommendation from the planning commission.
Thank you.
Hi, this is Jill Bane. I can take this one if you'd like.
Great, thank you.
All right, and I apologize, I'm in the car, so I don't have a video on, but just to give a brief introduction, this property request by the property owner is to replace a fence that's already existing along the property line, along the east side of their property line, replace it with a new fence of the vinyl material, but the ordinance limits the fence placement in the front yard to 42 inches, and the applicant is proposing to continue the fence at a full six feet in height all the way to the front property line. And so the request for the variance is for the portion of the fence that is in the front yard from 42 inches to 72 inches or six feet. I believe you have the rest of the information in there.
Okay, so the consideration zoning ordinance variance. Does anyone have any questions?
Well, as the applicant, can I introduce it?
Why don't we open up the public hearing first?
Okay, yeah.
We can let the applicant address any questions or concerns that the ZBA may have.
Okay, I wanted just to be noted, because, and just, I think that because it is you, that just, you know, right, because you're recusing yourself.
I'm recusing myself, yes.
You know, not to be in the process at all, just to be able to answer some questions.
Right, but as the applicant, you typically get to make some comments, so.
You are a different kind of applicant, though. Okay, so, so opening up the public, public hearing for the zoning ordinance variance. I know that we had one that I read in the study session. I will tee that up. It looks like we do have a hand up regarding this. Richard Mandel. No, we can't hear you.
I can't hear him, but I hear blipping in the background.
That's my phone.
Oh, sorry.
We can see your chat, Richard. We just can't hear you. Are you on mute?
I think, okay.
Can anybody now?
Yes.
Hear you.
Oh, thank you very much. I appreciate it. Yes, I'm, my wife and I have the building that's, that's, that's next to what we're talking about, and we fully support having the fence right there, and we support the variance.
Thank you. Um, we also have Sabrina Smith that is in the Q and A. One, we are still having problems with traffic, too many cars on east side of Sunny Brook Avenue. And the next one, we already have problems with the through traffic that's supposed to be controlled with the sign. So I'm not really, I'm thinking this is not regarding the actual variance.
I know, she's, I got comments regarding discount tires specially induced application, so.
Okay, Sabrina Smith's hand is up, though. If you could unmute her, Kelda. There you go, Ms. Smith.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Yep.
Yes, regarding, well, discount tires, I don't know if you want to speak on it. Nope, okay, so the street sign.
The, this is just about the alley vacation.
No, no, it's about the variance request.
I'm sorry, the variance, I'm sorry, 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 sorry.
The various, what are we speaking on?
This would be on Sunny Brook, next to, it's gonna be on the west side of.
Oh, okay, I'm on the east side, disregarded again.
No, we're behind this.
Oh, we're behind this, huh?
Yeah, we're talking across the street from it.
Okay, and you have a fence put up?
Pardon me?
A fence? Are we speaking on a, I'm not sure what we're talking about, because I'm talking about the wall discount tire, but you're not ready to discuss that.
No, ma'am, I don't believe that's even on our, I don't believe that that is part of, no, it's not part of the ZBA, so no, ma'am, it's not.
Okay, within disregard, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next person we have up is Christopher J.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Yep.
I was just wondering, out of curiosity.
The last two.
I can't.
Can you, can you repeat?
Totally. One second, go ahead.
No, I was just wondering why the fence has to be clear according to the zoning?
I didn't get the question.
I understand, I think I understand what the question is. The question was, why does the fence need to only be 42 inches in the front yard?
And see-through, Jill.
And see-through.
And see-through, because it is intended primarily to, well, if you would envision a street that had fences all the way out to the front sidewalk, it, that presents a very different look than having the yards, the front yards, all in open space, promoting more walkability in the area, but also visibility is an important aspect to consider, and that's why the ordinance requires the fence to be shorter, so that if people are in their driveways and pedestrians are walking along the sidewalk, that they are able to be seen. So there is, there's twofold, it's part aesthetics and part safety.
So then my question, because this is kind of similar to the question that I was asking for my house. To me, being at the end of the neighborhood and there being commercial buildings immediately next door, it doesn't make sense, and where the fence line is located, there's still plenty of room, unless you happen to be a cheetah, to see someone walking down the street as you're pulling out of your driveway. So it just didn't necessarily make sense.
Did you want to comment on that more, or?
Well, I don't know that that was a point that needed to, needed and respond to. I'm not really sure if there was a question or if it was really a comment, so.
I, I know, like you. So I guess my question would be, I understand the need for walkability, and that does make sense, you know, like within the neighborhood, but at the edge of a commercial property, would it not make more sense to provide some kind of delineation between neighborhood space and the neighbor, and the commercial space, rather than something that just allows like free-flowing visual, like, I wouldn't want to look at a building, like, I've got greenery on my part of the yard that kind of blocks being able to, the commercial building, like, it just makes sense, the fence would make more sense.
Can you mute everyone else, Kelda, please? Or Cheryl, can you mute everyone else?
Or am I, hold on, wait, did that stop the echo?
No, 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 it was, I see that someone else was, okay, thank you, Cheryl. So, I'm not really sure if this is during, this is something that we want to address during the ZB, excuse me, yeah, the zoning ordinance variance for this particular situation. So I guess I'm, I'm just trying to get clarity, is this specifically about the fence at 18129 Sunny Brook Avenue?
Yeah, I don't see that there's anything wrong with the fence.
Okay, that's, okay, thank you. I just want to make sure. Okay, do you have any other questions?
No.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else have any other questions?
I was just having a hard time hearing. That was the problem I was having.
I think Mr. Mandel's hand is raised. He has another question.
Okay, Mr. Mandel, did you have another question?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, yes. My understanding is that the fence that's being replaced is going to be the exact type and height of what's already there. There was a question brought up about safety. I don't believe that there was an issue, or there ever has been an issue about any accidents, or, or even any problems with the view. So my understanding is that it's going to be the same type and the same height, and, and what really has changed in, over the years, is the, is the zoning requirements for the fence. So the fence is good. The issue here is, do we change the fence from what it, from what it is to something different? And, and we, we support the fence being rebuilt, updated, as, as you know, of course, it ages of the, of the same type that's there, and that's my understanding that what the, what we're discussing here. So again, we're fully in support of that.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Is there any other questions in regards to the fence at 18129 Sunny Brook Avenue? Any hands up, Kelda?
Me.
You have a question?
Oh, no, I've got comments that I'd like to make.
Okay.
Okay, so, obviously, you know.
As the public hearing, let the applicant make the statement.
Public hearing at this time, I apologize.
Okay, obviously, I'm on council, but like, like any other resident, you know, I can periodically have issues that, you know, need to be resolved by the city. So obviously, I will be recusing myself from voting on this and let the, the remaining members of the ZBA make, make any determination. The one thing I do want to say is that I was told that, you know, if I wasn't an elected official, this was, was so obvious of a hardship, which I'll get into in a second, that it probably would have been administratively approved, but I wanted to go through the formal ZBA variance procedure for full transparency, so that residents, you know, would, would see exactly what, what, what's going on. That said, real quickly, history, you know, this, this existing wood privacy fence is six feet tall, it's been there for 32 years. It was one of the first things I did when I moved in, because we were looking directly into a parking lot. As some of the people have said, it's falling apart and, and needs to be replaced. I'm not trying to do anything different, just replace it with, with, with what is, what is there now. However, as Richard just, just mentioned, sometime in that 32-year period, the zoning ordinance changed, you know, allowing only a maximum height of 42 inches, and that it had to be a see-through fence. And as you all know, as zoning board of approval members, that in order for a variance to be approved, there has to be a hardship, and there's an obvious hardship in, in this particular instance, and that hardship is that the, the zoning, our zoning ordinance requires a five-to-six-foot masonry wall, screen wall, where the commercial property abuts the R1 residential district. So there's a wall that's required to be there, and it's not there. And in, you know, in 2006, that property was fully redeveloped, and that wall should have been placed in 2006, but, you know, there, there's nobody in the city who can determine why that wall didn't happen. If it didn't happen, there should have been a variance request from the building owners, which, which never occurred. So some type of off-book event allowed that wall not, not to be built, and because there's no wall, you know, we're subject to looking at a parking lot, you know, in all of its constant activity. There's no buffer from the noise, there's no buffer from, you know, stray light when cars come in there at night constantly and turn around to go out the other way, as well as, you know, trash buildup coming through from, from, from the parking lot. And what's, what I find to be incredibly ironic is that the screen wall requirement is there for exactly the reasons why I'm putting up a fence, because of the, the noise pollution, the light pollution, the trash, the, the lack of, of privacy. So I'm, I'm actually trying to do at my own expense what should have been done by the, by the building owner. And then, just to address the, the site issue, you know, if that fence weren't there, there is heavy landscaping. We can still see through it, but there is, especially in the, in the fall and the winter, but, you know, there, there, there is landscaping there, so it really doesn't change the, the view to have, have the fence there. So, so that should be hardship enough to, you know, approve the variance, but one other thing I also want to mention is that the ZBA has had the, in past history, has approved front yard privacy fence variances for corner lots, and, and you can find those all, all over the city, where front yards have six-foot privacy fences, and we are technically a corner lot. So, so just to summarize, you know, we want to put in a six-foot fence instead of a three-and-a-half-foot fence. We want it to be privacy instead of see-through, and obviously, if we had a three-and-a-half-foot fence or a see-through fence, it doesn't abate any of the, the issues that, that we have to deal with, you know, living next to a parking lot. So we're just trying to get some peace and tranquility that all other residents, you know, who live along the, the business frontage are afforded, that I'm not, because there's no wall there.
Thank you. Any council members have any questions? Excuse me, ZBA members have any questions?
Yeah, are we gonna review the statements that came in from the, from the residents regarding this property?
Those, those are the vacation, not for the variance request.
Oh, I see. Okay, all right, my mistake.
Any other questions? Take a motion to adjourn the zoning board of appeals and reconvene as the city council.
I think this is an action item for the zoning board of appeals that needs to be addressed.
I guess it would be. I don't have it in my, you know me, I read what I see.
The public hearing already.
Oh, let me, not one. Nope, that's not it.
If you have the packet, it's, the suggested motion is on page seven. To approve or deny the request of petitioner Bruce Cantor at 18129 Sunny Brook Avenue for a variance from section 5.16.8 of the City of Lathrow Village zoning ordinance, and authorize the applicant to replace the existing six-foot privacy fence with a six-foot vinyl fence.
So before we go with that, let me explain, so you all will all understand what I was doing. So I am actually looking at HT, HTML of our packet. It has no numbers on it. You have to click on each one to figure out which one you're supposed to be reading from, and so it does not say that this is the, the, it just says memo. So I apologize for holding everyone up, but there you have it. Suggested motion that Cheryl just said. Who would like to make the motion?
Can I make that motion that Cheryl just said? I don't have it in front of me either. I'm, I'm having a computer problem. I cannot bring it up at all.
So the suggested motion is to approve or deny the request of the petitioner Bruce Cantor at 18129 Sunny Brook Avenue for a variance from section 5.6, thank you, H, of the City of Lathrow Village zoning ordinance, and authorize the applicant to replace the existing six-foot privacy fence with a six-foot vinyl fence.
Make our motion to approve the applicant at 18129 Sunny Brook Avenue in accordance with section 5.16.8, that allows the applicant to replace the existing six-foot privacy fence with a six-foot vinyl fence?
Second.
Okay, it's been, well, moving the same. Is there any discussion further around there? Hearing none, roll call please.
Roll call. Board Member Ferguson.
Yes.
Board Member Garrett.
Yes.
Board Member Cantor.
I will recuse myself.
Board Member Sadiq.
Yes.
Motion carry.
Thank you very much. Now we will adjourn the, I will take a motion to adjourn the zoning board of appeals and reconvene as the city council.
Make a motion to zone, adjourn the zoning board of appeals and reconvene as city council of Lathrow Village.
Second.
And we are adjourned. So we call back to order the city council meeting. Do we have to do the roll call again, or we're good? I keep forgetting. That would be either Scott, or Cheryl, or Yvette.
Roll call.
Thank you. Roll call please.
Board Member Garrett. To adjourn.
We already adjourned the ZBA, so we're going back to city council.
Okay, to adjourn the ZBA and return as city council.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and that would be Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
And Councilmember Sadiq.
Yes, me too. I said, yes.
Yes, you did. Yes, you did. Okay, motion carry. You've returned to city council.
Okay, so now. Okay. So now we're to the, um, portion of, this is the study session that you have up right now, Cheryl, so you can just stop sharing your screen. So this is for, uh, the consent agenda. All items listed under consent agenda are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the city council and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion. If a discussion is desired, that items, item, items will be removed from the consent agenda and discussed separately immediately after the, after consent agenda approval in its normal sequence on the regular agenda. But anyone like to make the motion for the consent agenda, which includes minutes from May tenth budget study session, minutes from city council budget study session, session, May seventeenth, two thousand twenty-one, minutes from the city council regular meetings, May seventeenth, minutes from May twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-one, city council fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty-two budget hearing and special meetings, and then special city council meeting June seventh.
I'll make a motion to pr- approve the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved in second. I believe there was no discussion on that one. Roll call, please, for appro- well, is there any discussion? Sorry. Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Roll call. Mayor Pro Tim Cantor?
Yes.
Council member Siddiqui?
Yes.
Council member Ferguson?
Yes.
And Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Consent agenda adopted. Motion carry.
Thank you. Um, next is up for the dispersments reports.
I'll make a motion to approve the April disfor- dispersment reports for a total of four hundred and sixty-two thousand, seven hundred and sixty-four dollars and three cents. Uh, that's comprised of expenditures from the following funds: the general fund, two hundred and forty-four thousand, eight hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars; major road fund, twelve thousand, one hundred and eighty-four dollars; local road fund, eleven thousand, four hundred and fifty-three dollars; capital fund, ten thousand, three hundred and thirty-five dollars; uh, the DDA, seventeen thousand, seven hundred and forty-four dollars; and then the water and sewer, uh, fund for one hundred and sixty-six thousand, one hundred and nineteen dollars.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Roll call. Council member Siddiqui?
Yes.
Council member Ferguson?
Yes.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tim Cantor?
Yes.
Motion carry to approve the firstment report. You're welcome.
And then we have departmental reports. First one is the building department reports, May twenty-first. Then code enforcements, June report, CED department report, June twenty-twenty-one. And then police, May, police department reports. And last, Latherville Recreation Department Outdoor Event Management Plan, Safe Play Initiative.
Adam Mayor?
Yes.
I am having major computer issues. I'm only seeing half of that screen, and on some occasions, I cannot reboot that, uh, link at all, so please bear with me.
Okay, so would anyone like to do the approval of the departmental reports?
I'll, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the department reports.
Is there any discussion?
Just, there's a lot of things going on, and it's, it's just great to see. Uh, departments are plugging along, doing, doing their thing, so it's great.
Anyone else? Okay, roll call, please.
Roll call. Council member Ferguson?
Yes.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor?
Yes.
And council member Siddiqui?
Yes.
Motion carry to approve the department reports.
Thank you. Um, so now we will have, come to the point of the, uh, public comments for items that's on the agenda. And speakers are limited to three minutes. Please, um, let us know if you have anything that you would like to discuss. And then I will also be teeing up the comments that we received in, um, via email.
Apparently no hands raised.
Okay, thank you. Uh, let me try to find this again. Sorry. I think it's this one. So this is a public comment submitted on Friday, June eighteenth at three PM from Roger Lynn. Um, yes.
Wouldn't that go under the public hearing? Isn't that pu- isn't that public comments for the public hearing?
Um, it's also comments for items that's on the agenda.
Okay, I want to make sure it went in the proper place.
So this one says public comment submission, so I would assume that that would go under public comments, right?
Scott?
If, if, if it's dealing with the proposed vacation, then that's the appropriate time to make those comments would be during the public hearing on that. If there's any other comments, uh, relating to other agenda items, I believe there is one about the Discount Tire, which comes up later on, that this would be the appropriate time for, for those public comments.
Yes, hello, can anybody hear me?
Yes.
Yes, yes, that, um, I understand, um, Mr. Baker says this is the time to make comments about the public alleyway vacation?
All right. This during the hearing, and this is public comments for everything else that's on the, um,
Very good.
Thank you. So there was a email that was submitted regarding, um, this, oh, nope, sorry. So there was something that was regarding, um, regarding the bow tire. This is where Ms. Smith, you may speak at this time. Sabrina Smith? Is she still there?
Yeah, she's, she's on mute.
Hello?
Yep, do you hear you?
Do you hear? You hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and regarding discount, regarding discount wall, correct?
Yes.
Uh, yes, discount wants to build this wall in our, that will come on the side, but it will also block off somewhat, uh, our street. So in the fall or the wintertime, when they do a lot of tire changing and cars come around off of Southfield of Eleven Mile, it blocks the entryway into our street on Southfield, I mean, on Sunny Brook. However, if they build the wall, they probably, I believe they want to expand their area right there on the corner to pull more cars in, but it's causing, um, problems for our street, uh, as a resident. The noise, the, the clogging of the corner. So, uh, we necessarily didn't want, I didn't want that wall. I particularly need that wall.
Thank you.
That was one concern. And the second, well, there was another concern. We have a, uh, two big, huge signs that says, "No through traffic", and we still get tons of traffic coming through our street. And I, I don't expect the police to always catch everyone because they have other duties and obligations to do. So we either need to come up with another brainstorm idea to keep this traffic coming through because they totally ignoring the sign.
Thank you. Was there anyone else that had a question, or should I say a comment for anything on the, um, agenda? And there is one more, and Cheryl, I can't seem to find it from Mr. Bachelor.
Did he submit that for public comment, or was that for, to each of us individually?
Well, I mean, ones that I receive, I read them into public comment.
Would you like me to read it then?
Yes, please. I can't find it.
Dear neighbors Carmen, Beverly Rose, Lana, Phil, and Sabrina Aaron, please share with any neighbors that you feel might be interested. Please look over the attached correspondence between DDA Director Susie Steck and ourselves. As far as we are concerned, the proposal that Discount Tire has made to the City of Latherville in regard to the wall slash fencing that will be surrounding the lot behind their building is not acceptable. The attached picture of their building in Clinton Township is in a very commercial neighborhood directly on Grasshead Avenue. In no way can that neighborhood compare to our lovely City of Latherville Village. Their proposed wall and fencing will be exposed to Sunny Brook Avenue. This certainly is not the type of materials that should be used on our residential street. Discount Tire is a five-and-a-half-billion-dollar company and is very well-respected in the industry. Their storefront is over one hundred, located in, store count is over one hundred, located in the states across our country. Their model has always been to please their local customers and the neighborhoods where their stores are located. Because of the proximity of their store at Eleven Mile, I six ninety-six and Southfield Road, this is especially important to them. We are certain that they will be pleased to take into account and accept our plans and input. It will be a winning situation, one that will showcase their store and please our residents. In Susie's letter to us, she stated that the next city council meeting will be on Monday, June twenty-first remotely, and would like us to be a part of that discussion, expressing our concerns at that time. Also attached is the type of fencing that we feel would enhance the redo of the space behind their building. The brick columns would, could be constructed out of the same material as they proposed new addition on the Sunny Brook side of their building. We are open to any ideas that you might share with us. Our best to all of you, Chuck and Colleen Bachelor.
Thank you. Is there any other, um, public comments? That's gonna be for the items that's on the agenda. Okay, hearing none. Um, and now to the public hearings. Public hearings for the vacation of a portion of the Southfield Road Alley. And who would like to introduce that?
I can introduce that. Alright, so the ci- the city has received a request, uh, from Mr. Cantor, resident, uh, located on Sunny Brook Avenue. It's requesting to vacate portion of the eleven, of the Southfield, the Western Southfield Road alleyway between Sunny Brook Avenue and West Eleven Mile. The applicant is present, obviously, as a council member, but he's going to be recusing himself from, from this discussion. Sorry, I'm a bit under the weather, my voice here. Uh, he's gonna be, going to be recusing himself, but this, this is a request for city council to vacate a portion of the alleyway. As part of that request, the, the city is required to conduct a public hearing. There is no action item on the agenda for this this evening, given the, um, vacation, or given the absence of Councilwoman Stallings and her resignation. Uh, so tonight is simply the public hearing. The council is accepting public comments with respect to the vacation of that alleyway. I'm sure Mr. Cantor has more to add.
You know me too well.
Thank you. Um, so the public hearing is open. Is there anyone that would like to be heard? I do have a couple of, um, letters to read into record. And because the she, the screen is shared, I can't see if somebody's hand is up, so you will have to talk. Thank you. Okay, so then I'll read this now, uh, submitted on Friday, June eighteenth, three o'clock, by Roger Lynn. It is a question about, question concerning request of vacate public alleyway at eighteen one two nine Sunny Brook. Number one, with Bruce Cantor currently on city council, isn't this considered a conflict of interest? Um, number two, will other homes or alleyways within LV also be allowed the same right as what is being requested by Bruce? Number three, if trash is a concern, why isn't Rami Swiden, code enforcement officer, not giving citations to commercial property owners? Number four, if the city agrees to Bruce's request, there is no mention in the notice of public hearing what the selling price is for this segment of land? Please advise selling price. Thank you. The next one was a letter that was sent in.
While you're looking, uh, Mr. Mandel has his hand raised.
Okay, um, I have it up, but go ahead, Mr. Mandel. Is he still on mute?
Sorry about that. Um, can anybody hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, yes, I'm, um, I'm in favor of the, uh, vacating. Um, I represent the, the, the commercial property that is also in question here, uh, representing Landland Holdings. Uh, we currently have a license, uh, for the parking lot that's in question. And, um, and, and that property is, uh, I believe, should be vacated because there's an existing parking lot that's on it. Um, and the other, uh, portion is residential property. I think that, um, that this property serves no further use for, um, and, um, and it, and it doesn't makes, doesn't make sense to continue, uh, licensing with this, this portion. So, so I, I am in favor of, uh, vacating it and, and separating the property from where the parking lot is and on one side, and where all the vegetation is on the other side. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The, um, other public comment, comment is from Mr. Rob, uh, to my, to Mary, Tom Morelli, sorry. Um, I live at eighteen four eight five Dolores Avenue, Latherville. I like to comment on the proposed vacation of the alley between eighteen one two nine Sunny Brook and two seven zero four seven five one South Hill Road business addresses. I would recommend a no vote. The city should not be in the business of providing land grants. Alleyways are provided to ease main street traffic, provide service, and alternate access to establishments on the main road for the benefit of the public. This alley currently provides that function. The petitioner's request, which seems heavy with personal appeals, includes his general maintenance activities. Sorry, the petitioner's request, which seems heavy with personal appeals, including his general maintenance activities, should be applauded as good civic action, actions, but does not deem worthy of the city gifting him the property, which is, which as the claimant himself states, raises the value of the property. If the city, if the city property, which has been abused by neglect of the appropriate code practices as stated, the city should seek action against the owners of the property to uphold the codes of the city. The pr- the petitioner understands this, eh, this as he states. While a five-to-six-feet-high masonry, masonry screen wall buffer is required by ordinance, it does not currently exist. The petitioner, as an informed council member and citizen of the Latherville, of Latherville, should seek relief via existing code violation relief, not by petitioning for gifting of property. Lastly, the petitioner at one point states, "The city has no existing or future uses planned for this alley", yet later on indicates a future Southfield Road project would provide additional value to the owners of the building with regard to buyout of their property from the future project. Therefore, it seems there is indeed some future use for property, and in fact, real value in this alley for whomever owns the property. If for some reason the city deems the alley in its entirety, or split, as a petitioner is requesting, is of no longer use to the city, the city should in fact offer to sell the property via public auction to the highest bidder. Is there anyone that would like to be heard during the public hearing? That's all I have for things that were sent in.
Yes, uh, Richard Mando, representing, uh, Landland Holdings. Uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. Sorry, I'm, I'm new at this. I, I don't use Zoom very often. I, I listened to the letter, and the, uh, the writer is, is very eloquent, but he, he miss, he, he doesn't understand the facts as I heard them. I believe that the, uh, the petitioner who, who is writing that letter believes that this is a functional alleyway. It is not. There is no, there is no alley at all. It has been taken over by vegetation and a parking lot. So this, and, and this, and this alleyway has no value to the city. There is, there is no independent buyer that would buy such a small strip of land. I believe it's thirty feet wide. And, and also Chase Bank is on the other side. So this vacation, I'm not quite sure where, where the boundaries are, but there, there's at least, I believe, three owners. There's Chase Bank, who, which the alleyway goes through. There's the Veritas Building, there's Landland Holdings, and Mr. Cantor's property. So I guess that's four. So this, this, this land has no value to the city. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else that would like to be heard during the public hearing on the vacation of a portion of the Southfield Road Alley?
Assume again, I'll get to make my comments as the applicant after the public hearing.
That's what I was gonna do.
Perfect. Just, just checking.
Is there anyone's hand up, Kelda? Okay, go ahead, Bruce.
Scott, did you want to say anything before I go on? I know there were some things that weren't factual, and I know you said earlier you were gonna correct them.
Why don't you go ahead, and if there's anything left after that, Mr. Mandel, do touch on some, some of those inaccuracies, but I'll, I'll let you make your presentation.
Per- perfect, okay. Um, yeah, everybody knows I'm thorough, so I will try to be as quick as possible. This one will be a little bit longer than, than the prior one. But again, you know, as noted earlier, even though I am a councilperson, you know, I do have matters like anyone else that, that require resolution, and as the applicant, again, I will be recusing myself from any involvement in the decision and allowing council, the other remaining council members to make an unbiased decision at, at a later date. Again, this is a request to vacate the public alleyway that's not used by the city, as Mr. Mandel pointed out, to the three property owners on, on both sides. I do want to emphasize the point that this is a request that any resident can make, because I know that question has come up, and it came up in some of the external public comment. So any resident can make this, and in fact, city council has on multiple occasions granted alleyway vacations or encroachment licenses to residents and business owners who wanted to use a, a, a public alleyway. And in fact, since two thou- since two thousand, there have been twenty-seven of these requests that have been granted. Eleven of them were alleyway vacations, and there have been a few in the, in the past year. And, you know, in, in all of the eleven alleyway vacations, there was no fee charged to the resident, the, the city deemed the, the land unusable, and deeded the, the portion to the, the adjacent property owners. Ideally, I would have loved to have make this, made this request when I was not on council for appearance sake, but unfortunately, there's been some, some issues that have arisen that have made this a little bit more time sensitive. So real quickly, as, as history, in two thousand and six, this, this building was, was raised and completely redeveloped as a two-story modern building. And during this project, as, as has been stated, the city allowed the commercial property owner to pave ten feet of the alleyway for necessary parking. And I say necessary parking because the only way that building could have been built is if that portion of the alley was used for parking, because if, if they didn't have those parking spaces, they wouldn't have the minimum required parking spaces for our, our, in order to meet our zoning requirements. So, so they were allowed to pave that ten feet and make landscaping improvements on the, on the other ten feet. So the city allowed the building owner to commercially use and profit off of the entire twenty-foot alleyway without any formal alleyway vacation, without an encroachment license, without a lease, without any type of, of easement or agreement. So they essentially gave the entire property to the commercial building owners, which goes against our ordinance that was in, in place at the time and is currently in place in terms of, you know, how a vacation actually works. In addition, as I mentioned in the ZVA discussion a little bit earlier, the zoning ordinance requires a five to six foot masonry screen wall when a commercial property abuts the residential district. And again, for this wall not to have been built, a variance would have been required, and no variance was ever, ever filed. So our city officials, our attorney, planner, you know, economic developer are all perplexed in terms of how this, this property was allowed to redevelop without building the, the required wall, since no variance was ever given. And then lastly, i- if as far as the history goes, the, the owner of the two-story building has historically provided no, no maintenance to the alleyway or landscaping, which, which has resulted in a dramatically diminished and ineffective buffer, providing us with no privacy, causes noise and light issues and trash issues. So for example, there's, there's two gaping holes in the landscaping that are about fifteen to twenty feet wide. So we, we look out our window or in our backyard, and we look straight at eleven mile and Southfield Road intersection and have light coming in, you know, constantly in, in, in the evening. And, and so because of their lack of maintenance, you know, I'm spending, you know, at least six or seven days a, a year weeding, pruning, spraying, raking, taking care of the, the property to abate this, this eyesore, not to mention, you know, all the weekly, weekly trash pickup. So that's a little bit of the history. In terms of the rationale and why I think council should approve this, this vacation, first off, for, for an alley vacation to occur, the city must have no current or future use planned for the alley in question. And from my discussion with, with city officials, this is exactly the case. There is no planned use of that, that alleyway. If the city were to use this alleyway for any purpose, the buildings that are adjacent to the alleyway would have to close, because they would no longer have the necessary parking requiring, required for them to, to operate. They, they rely on using this alleyway commercially for their businesses to function. Also, in, in the past, there has been some discussion about linking the alleyways up into a continuous alleyway. This hasn't been done because of the massive costs associated with doing that. And if that, if we were to even find the, the money to be able to do that, again, it wouldn't make sense, given that it would shut those buildings down for lack of parking, and there's no egress to eleven mile road, or to Sunnybrook for that matter. So if we, if there was an egress made to eleven mile road, it would have to go through the Chase Bank building, which, which would again, kill another, another business. And then the other thing to mention is council knows the environmental assessment for the Southfield Road Boulevard project is complete, and we've moved into the funding phase. So while, you know, I've been here thirty years, and for every five years, we hear it's five years down the road, it's five years down the road. Well, we've been told it's, it's five years down the road again, but this is a lot more realistic, because, you know, we're, we're, we've met all the hurdles and we're just waiting for funding. So when this happens, the entire commercial building will be taken over by Oakland County. Oakland County will take over that property via eminent domain, and it will become the Southfield Road right-of-way, which would preclude any constructive use of, of, of that city-owned alleyway by, by the city. So this, this property was essentially vacated by the city already in two thousand and six, and it was done improperly with no formal arrangement between the building owner and the city. Further, the, the city ordinance requires alleyway vacations to be split down the middle with half going to each of the adjacent property owners. That did not happen in two thousand and six. And this request is, is really a simple one, just to formalize the alleyway vacation that took place in two thousand and six in a proper manner that's consistent with the ordinance back in two thousand and six, as well as the ordinance currently. And then just to finish up here, in, in terms of, you know, why do, why, why do we want to do this? It's because we have no privacy and we're, we're not afforded the, you know, the peace and the tranquility that, that every Lathar Village resident is, i- is entitled to. You know, as we noted, there's, there's no buffer wall that's required. The only buffer is the landscape, which has gaping holes, provides no benefit for, for half the year when there, when there are no leaves on the tree. It's grossly under-maintained, filled with weeds, riddled with trash, and it's, it's a complete eyesore, as you can see from the pictures that, that I included in my, in my documentation. So vacating this alleyway would, would mean, you know, first off, that the businesses would now own all of their parking, and they would have much more security than they do now. And second is that I could then heavily invest my own money in this ten-foot wide swath of property to provide both a, a proper and effective buffer and convert it from an eyesore, you know, to a beautiful green space that would benefit, you know, all the, the adjacent property owners. So again, you know, that's, those are the comments that I want to make. I do want to address one comment that was made in the, in the letter that was read into public comment. The author suggests that we seek relief using code enforcement, you know, for the, for the buffer zone, but that's, that's not a, that's not a possibility. We can't use code enforcement to, you know, require a wall when the wall hasn't been there for, for fifteen years. The only way that we can do that is should they do a major parking lot or building renovation, then we could retroactively apply codes. So that, that is not a, an option. The other thing he mentioned in the letter, he said that the, you know, the future Southfield Road, you know, takeover of that property would provide for future use of that, that alleyway. It, it doesn't. I mean, the property would be gone, and, and the alleyway would still be, you know, a landscaped, you know, parking lot area. So it doesn't, it doesn't make the alleyway more usable. It makes it less usable. So so those are my comments. And Scott, if, if I missed anything, I guess the one thing I would, might ask you to comment on is the, the, the nature of, of, you know, why these, these, these properties are, are vacated. Like I said, we've done, you know, twenty-seven or eleven of them in the past, and, and why there's no cost associated with it to the adjoining property owners.
Yeah, and, and typically just, I think most of the things that I were gonna address have been covered, but just, just to touch on that point briefly, you're correct. My office has twenty-plus years worth of records, and not once has the city ever charged any applicant for, for either a street vacation or an alley vacation for that property. And primarily the basis for that is because, as it's been indicated, the property really is of no value to the city. It was previously planted to be used as a roadway or as, as an alley. It just hasn't come to fruition, and, and there are no plans to, to develop those areas. So, so it hasn't, it has not been charged. There's never been a charge for this or for any street or alley vacations.
And if council members have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Anyone have any questions?
No questions.
Okay, we'll move on to the action requests. For reading into record and accepting as a council, reading Donna Stallings' resignation letter dated in May thirty-first, twenty twenty-one to the mayor and council. It is with regret that I must inform you of my decision to resign my position as Lathar Village Council member effective immediately. I will be leaving this position for personal reasons that will not allow me to complete my tenure to the fullest extent desired. It has been an honor in these past six years to serve our great city of Lathar Village and the committed rela- residents who I've grown to know and appreciate. It has also been a wonderful experience to serve with you as my colleagues through the challenges of instituting the changes that will help to transform and build an economically vibrant and sustainable city. In closing, I remain committed to serving the city through the various nonprofit and community development organizations where there continues to be a need. I pray God's richest blessings upon our city for good health, to follow each household, and prosperity for all, kind regards and blessing, Donna P. Stallings. So at this time, we have to take in or basically accept the resignation. Scott, I'm not really sure.
Yeah, that's correct. I think the city council could take a this letter has been submitted to the clerk. The clerk's putting it on file, but city council could take a motion accepting the letter of resignation.
I'll, I'll make a motion to accept the resignation of Donna Stallings.
Second.
It's moved in, in a second. Is there any discussion on that?
Yeah, I just want to thank Donna for her, her, her six years of service. You know, we know, it's, we all know as council members that it's, it's a commitment and want to thank her, and I hope she's doing well and wish her the best of luck.
I too want to say, I really appreciate working alongside Donna for the last six years. I was very, really disappointed to see that she was resigning. And I really pray her good, good health in life. Anyone else? Hearing none.
I just wish Donna the best.
Okay.
Wish Donna the best going forward.
Okay, roll call, please.
Roll call. Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor?
Yes.
Councilmember Siddiqui?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next, we have the resolution regarding vacation of the alleyway, of the alley west of Southfield Road between West Eleven Mile Road and Sunnybrook Avenue. The suggestion motion is to propose postpone this request because of the vacancy that's on the city council. Because of this request, it's required that four members have to vote in, to affirm the resolution. So who would like to make the motion to postpone this?
Make a motion to postpone this.
So the motion is to postpone consideration of the resolution regarding the vacation of the alley west of South Hill Road between West Eleven Mile Road and Sunnybrook Avenue until July twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-one, or future meetings of city council. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved. And second, is there any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Roll call. Mayor Pro Tim Cantor?
Uh, Mayor Pro Tim Cantor recuses himself from this vote.
Councilmember Siddiqui?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
And Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Motion carried to postpone this item.
Thank you. The next item is the second reading and consideration of adoption of an, of an ordinance to amend Article Two sign ordinance of the city code for the city of Lathar Village. Who is introducing that?
Not sure if we still have Jill here or not, but I can, I can introduce this. So this is a second reading. There have, there have not been any changes since the first reading, which was conducted on May seventeenth of this year. Primary, probably the key updates, the sign ordinance is the inclusion of and regulation of backlit signs or sign illumination, as well as the updating of the ordinance language with respect to temporary signage and expressive signs. Just making them current with the current legal standards and, and what other communities are, are doing with respect to those. Don't think there were any other concerns, comments, or questions from the last reading, but if there are, be more than happy to answer them.
Thank you. Who would like to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the second reading and adoption of, of sign ordinance to amend Article Two sign ordinance of the city code for the city of Lathar Village, and also want to be specific that, that, that ordinance starts on page one eighty-one of our packet, because there are three versions of it, and it, and that's the, the version with the correct information.
Thank you.
Second.
It moved. And second, is there any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Roll call. Councilmember Siddiqui?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next, we have the zoning text amendments, chapter five, site standards, and chapter six, development review.
Sure, I'll take this one. So the planning commission has been diligently going through the zoning ordinance and making some fairly minor administrative amendments. Essentially, to summarize this, there's, this is changing some, there's language in the zoning ordinance pertaining to administrative roles and responsibilities that have kind of caused some confusion in the past with new and existing developments. We've amended that to reflect the city administrator and/or their designee. In that instance, we've also made some up- Uh, in that instance, we've also, uh, made some updates to, uh, the standards for, uh, fences specifically where they are, uh, where they have, but those commercial string walls. And then, um, we've also updated, um, different elements in the, in chapter six of the development, um, the development review chapter, um, including information on cannabis as well as, um, you know, changing the number of submission or plans that are required for submission. So, um, expect to see some more, uh, amendments like this, but for now, we're just asking that you adopt these changes.
Thank you. Who would like to make a motion?
I can make a motion to accept the recommendations from the planning commission to adopt the zoning test amendments of chapter five site standards and chapter six development review.
Second.
It's been moved. And second, is there any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call please.
Roll call, Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor?
Yes.
Councilmember Siddiqui?
Yes.
Motion carry.
Thank you. Next is the first amended special land use resolution for twenty seven thousand Southfield Road Discount Tire.
Would you like me to go through that one then?
Sure.
Okay. Um, oops, I just had it open. Um, you're with me one moment. Okay. Um, as city council is aware, um, the process for uses that require a special approval in the city through the zoning ordinance, um, require final approval from the city council after the planning commission's recommendation and public hearing. Um, so this project is located at twenty seven hundred Southfield Road. It's comprised of multiple parcels. Um, and they are on, um, Eleven Mile, the Service Drive, Southfield Road, and Sunny Brook. The pri- properties, um, have all been owned collectively and operated as the tire repair facility for many years. Um, currently, the applicant has proposed some modifications to improve, um, the circulation on the site as well as, um, utilize a portion of the lot for parking. And then also to create a small addition to this building for, um, dead tire storage. So they're moving some of that inside. So the site should be cleaned up. Um, and then hopefully some of the circulation issues will improve as well. Uh, so the planning commission did review this, uh, back in May and had a public hearing and the, um, I think only the outstanding items have been primary, pretty much addressed. Um, I don't think there was anything else remaining other than the items that we had identified in our letter dated May eleventh. Um, I know that there have been some ongoing conversations about the screen wall. Um, the wall is required, as we were hearing earlier, um, between, uh, this parcel and the residential parcel. Um, and I know that there is some, uh, ongoing communication about that and as to how that, um, evolves through our conversation, you know, we're happy to help facilitate those discussions. Um, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have on this project.
Thank you.
Only, only thing I'll add to that, uh, is that there is an, included in your package, there is an amended special land use resolution because, uh, Discount Tire currently is operating that business as a special land use. Uh, it included in that, uh, in addition to what Jill has stated, yeah, there were some conditions imposed by the planning commission that have been added on to that. If there are any additional conditions that council feels appropriate, we, we can make those amendments.
Anything, um, I'm assuming not anything else. Uh, anyone want to make the motion?
I can make the motion to accept the recommendations from the planning commission for the special land use at twenty seven zero 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 Southfield Road and adopt the attached first amended special land use resolution. Second.
It's moved. And second, is there any discussion?
Yeah, I mean, I think we should, you know, as a council, discuss, um, the required, uh, wall, uh, running from the, uh, public alleyway to, uh, running along Sunny Brook to, I don't know what the property address is, but I know it's Mr. Charles Batchelor's, uh, home. Um, he did, uh, reach out to, I think, all of us. Uh, I think his, his request is, is, uh, I think it's reasonable. Um, you know, basically he's asking for, uh, a slightly more, I guess, decorative wall, kind of similar to what we would have in the MX district, uh, along that short stretch. Um, and, you know, I, I think I'd, I'd like to hear, um, you know, Jill and Suzie's opinion and thoughts on that matter. Um, and then, you know, I think it might make sense for us to discuss as a council to decide whether or not it makes sense to add that as another, uh, stipulation to the, the special land use resolution.
That'd be a four to six foot wall added.
Well, it's, Suzie, do you want to talk about it?
The applicant, oh, go ahead, Suzie.
I was just gonna say the, the, well, the applicant is here to discuss, you know, discuss those, um, discuss the, the wall. Um, and, you know, he's been made aware of, uh, the comments, um, given to us by Mr. Batchelor. So he, he knows what's going on. Um, I will say that the, the wall is not, it wouldn't be in addition to, and it would, um, the, the wall along Sunny Brook is required and it is indicated on their plans as, uh, being a three foot wall and it would currently, it would be ma- it would match the, um, the screen wall along the, going along the north-south property line. So, um, it would just be transitioning, uh, per code from six feet down to three. So, um, you know, I've, I've def- I've spoken to Mr. Batchelor, um, you know, you saw my communication with him. Uh, the email was included in the packet. Uh, I certainly don't disagree that, um, brick piers with wrought iron fencing and landscaping, uh, would be very attractive. Um, I think that, uh, if you, if that's something that council wanted, you know, a condition that you wanted to, uh, place on the approval or something that you wanted to discuss with Discount Tire, I certainly think that, um, again, having that treatment along the, particularly the Sunny Brook side, um, would be, that would be a very nice entrance way onto their property. Um, and if you really wanted to, uh, be consistent on the site, I would say, you know, it would be within your purview to say all of the three foot walls could be that, uh, brick piers with wrought iron and landscaping, but, um, I mean, as it stands, it's, uh, the wall itself is required. So, I don't know. Jill, you got anything to add on that or?
Um, no, I think I, only that, um, that the purpose of the wall is to provide not only the screening, but also, um, you know, some noise reduction, um, as we talked earlier. Um, I think that, um, they, while I understand the concern of the appearance of the wall, um, I think that to some extent, we also need to be thinking ahead beyond the, the current resident who might be okay with it and think about future residents who, um, could rightly expect to have a, a full wall there as required by the ordinance. And so that would just be something I would offer as consideration.
Yeah, that's why I asked if it was going to be a four to six foot wall, because a three foot wall doesn't provide much screening or noise reduction.
Right. Well, it's three foot along, as we talked about a little bit earlier. Um, you know, as you get in closer to Sunny Brook Road due to, again, the visibility concern, um, but then it does go back to, um, an increase to a six foot high. Wow.
Okay.
Right, but I guess the question I have, uh, Jill, is given that this is, this is an east-west wall, um, uh, running parallel to Sunny Brook that we're talking about, and that will join to the north-south wall, which will be a proper screening wall. You know, I, I think it's, it, I'm just thinking out loud here. It seems to me that that's more of an aesthetic thing than a functional thing, because the only thing that would be behind that more decorative wall that runs east-west along Sunny Brook would be the parking spaces for Discount Tire and the property owner would be protected, you know, via the north, north-south wall, which would be a proper masonry screen wall, unless I'm, unless I'm missing something.
So you're seeing along, just along the, the portion of the fence that is parallel to Sunny Brook? And the, and the twenty foot transition area?
Um, I, I was just referring, my thoughts were just for the, you know, the, you know, running from the public alleyway to the north-south wall. Um, you know, I hadn't really thought about the, 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 the screen wall where it tapers down, but, um, you know, it's as Suzie suggested, but I, I was thinking, personally was thinking more towards the, um, you know, the, the, the east-west wall that parallels Sunny Brook. But you're right. I, I do, I do tend to agree with you. You know, I mean, you know, on the north, the north-south section, um, you know, we, we do have to take into consideration the fact that Mr. Batchelor is not going to live there forever. Um, and, you know, more than likely, the next person that, you know, is there is going to want some sort of privacy. Um, and obviously there's some consistency here as, as a homeowner who just spent, you know, twenty minutes talking about wishing he had a wall, you know, next to his house, you know, I, 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 I think we do need, as you said, Jill, you know, on the north-south border to look towards the, the future and, and have consistency on that north side, north, north-south wall, that it is a, 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 a privacy wall, and it, it does help to abate the sound and the light pollution and the trash and the, you know, the privacy. So, so I, I guess, yeah, I would think just on the east-west, you know, Sunny Brook side.
So as you get closer to the street, uh, to Sunny Brook, um, does that wall have to taper down to three feet because of, um, safety, uh, issues, right? So you have to be able to look over the wall if you're in a car. So as you travel south, um, well, it's running, it's running north-south, so the southern part of it is higher, right? So it's four to six. Okay. But the, the concern is now is that little section where you want to go east-west where the parking lot is, right?
At least from what I'm proposing, yes.
Yeah, so you want to make it three foot, uh, traveling east-west, coming towards the, 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 um, Discount Tire parking lot.
Right. Well, the wall, the, as Jill said earlier, the wall there is required, but, but what we're saying is to make it a, a more decorative, you know, wall as opposed to the, the standard stamped concrete.
I see. And how decorative are you talking? Um, like, uh, rust color brick or what, what are we talking?
It was in the letter. There, there were pictures in the letter.
Yeah, I can't access it right now. I think it's down further. Cheryl, I think that Cheryl doing that, right?
So, uh, we're trying to look for that. Mr. Batchelor's hand is up. Could you, um, unmute his line, please? Mr. Bachelor, you can unmute your line. Bottom left corner. Mr. Bachelor, is he still there?
I don't see him. He may have accidentally disconnected.
Okay, is there any other, um, and I see that there was a question. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Mr. Bachelor, you? There you go. You're not on mute, Mr. Bachelor.
Well, wh- while we're waiting for Mr. Bachelor, is, is it appropriate, um, to hear what the representative from, uh,
Discount Tire. Discount Tire. Sorry, so sorry. Um, yes, that'll be fine. Go ahead.
All right. Uh, hello, this is Joe Westerbake with E N G Engineering. Um, Discount Tire doesn't have any issue, um, with either option. If you guys would like to have that other decorative wall on the front face or the north side, um, they have no issue installing that either. So.
Okay.
All right, well, if, if that's the case.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, if that's the case, then I will amend my, um, suggested motion to accept the recommendation from the planning commission for the special land use at twenty seven thousand Southfield Road, um, and adopt the attached first amended special land use resolution with the caveat that the east-west wall, uh, that parallels Sunny Brook is, uh, the, is of a, of a decorative type with the, uh, uh, brick columns and, uh, iron, iron gates that was, uh, included in Mr. Batchelor's letter.
Can you pause it right there? It looks like he, Mr. Bachelor is off of mute. Mr. Bachelor, you can, I, it looks like you can start talking. Okay. You made the motion, um.
Yeah, I am, I amended my motion to include, uh, you know, um, the more decorative, uh, fencing option along Sunny Brook.
Second. Okay. It's been moved. And second, is there any further discussion?
Yeah, I just wanted to say one other thing. Um, one of the public comments, uh, I think it was, uh, earlier in the, the, the open public comment section was talking about, um, you know, the possibility that, that this, uh, plan by Discount Tire was going to, you know, increase traffic along the area. And that, uh, we talked about this at the planning commission, uh, and that absolutely should not be the case because there really is no, no difference. I mean, all they're really doing, the, 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 the number of parking spaces stays the same. Uh, they're just moving some of the parking spaces over to their residential partial, um, to allow them to have some additional room to build the structures to, uh, uh, store their, um, used tires so that they're not in public view anymore. Um, so it really should have no effect on the, 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 the traffic flow or the, um, uh, the volume of, of, of people that are coming to and from the facility. So that, hopefully that'll alleviate her concerns.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Wait, Mr. Bachelor's back on. Is there, Mr. Bachelor? Are you there? No. Okay.
Mr. Bachelor, you can, um, you're not on mute. Because it is, I'm trying to, um, get you to, um, give your comment before it goes into the actual, um, vote.
Or type your comment.
Yeah, why don't you try, if, if you can, Mr. Bachelor, why don't you try typing your comment in the chat or the Q and A area?
While he's trying to work with the technology, would it be correct to say that what is being proposed by council is essentially what Mr. Bachelor and some of the residents asked for?
I was thinking the same thing.
And I'm absolutely confident that Mr. Bachelor will let me know first thing in the morning if that is not correct.
Okay, um, let's go to roll call then.
Roll call. Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Councilmember Siddiqui.
Yes.
And Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
Motion, Carrie.
Thank you. Up is the. City Administrator Contract Consideration Request.
Mayor and Councilmembers, this was, as was discussed in your, um, study session earlier. And in relationship to my annual, um, evaluation and review, um, the. Um, request that I have relative to having, um, my compensation and hazard pay coincide. With what staff and officers and, um. Are receiving and then relative to the vacation payout that's already allowed for in my, uh, contract. That I get the payout of the unused ten vacation days and the rollover of the balance. And relative to the severance that the, um, there being an addendum to the contract. That reflects those changes that we discussed and summarized in the memo.
Yeah. Um, I'm looking at it, I don't see an actual.
I don't think I made a suggested motion.
Yeah, you don't have one in here, so if anyone would like to make a motion on, um. On this.
Yeah, yeah, based on our dis- discussion earlier, I'll make a motion to, uh, approve the city administrator contact, contract consideration requests. Uh, that are outlined in page two, two eighty-one of tonight's packet.
Okay.
Moving second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Roll call, Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Councilmember Siddiqui.
Yes.
Member Ferguson.
Yes.
And Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Motion, Carrie.
Yeah, congratulations, Cheryl, it's well deserved.
Congratulations, Cheryl.
Next up, we have the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-five Professional Auditing Services bid and award of contract.
Mayor and Councilmembers, if you recall, we had the RFP for the Professional Auditing Services. We received ten responses. The Audit Committee did a review and evaluation based on the scoring metrics that were provided in the, um. The packet that went out and all of the participants on the committee agreed that the contract should. Be recommended for Plant Moran. This is actually a reduction in the amount that they had previously charged. And the recommendation is for the Plant Moran to get the, um, professional auditing. Contract for the five-year period starting, um, two thousand twenty-one. July one in the amount of thirty-nine thousand eight hundred, that includes six thousand for the single audit, which we anticipate that we are going to be required to have. And then there is also the option for additional two years, one year at a time after the five years.
I'll make a motion to accept the Professional Auditing Service, Services bid. Award a five-year contract with options for two additional years to Plant Moran. And the authorize and authorize the mayor and or city manager to sign the, uh, contract. And, uh, related documentation on behalf of the city of Lathrow Village.
Moving second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Roll call, Councilmember Siddiqui.
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Motion, Carrie.
Thank you. We have a resolution to direct the city administrator to pre- prepare plans. And cost estimates for the establishment of a special assessment district. For ditch and sidewalk repair and to schedule a public hearing on the advisability of proceeding.
Well, if you recall, relative to the, um, construction of our street projects, we also have to address the, um. The ditches and the culverts, and in this case for the streets that we're looking at, there are some, um. Culvert areas that, and ditches that do need to be restructured. So in part, as part of the, um, process, we need to set up these special assessments for those properties. We'll look into it to make certain that. How many, if it's eleven or twelve and, um. The memo outlines that tot- totality of that process, and this is the first step, which is essentially announcing our intent.
Like to make a motion?
I'll, uh, make a motion to adopt the attached resolution to direct the city administrator to prepare plans and cost estimates for the establishment of a. SAD, or a, a special assessment district for, for addition sidewalk. Repair, uh, and to schedule a public hearing on the advisability of, of proceeding.
Second.
Moving second, is there any, uh, discussion?
Yeah, a couple, couple things. Um, first off, um. Uh, this, this section of Cambridge is, is a section that, that has horrendous, uh, ditch problems, uh, and, uh. The, the, this special assessment, actually, uh, the genesis for that was, was several residents, um, requesting. Uh, a, a special assessment, uh, to the infrastructure committee. Um, so that was, that was how this, this whole process started. Um. The, uh, a- as, as the city administrator indicated, we'll check to see if there are twelve homes. I believe there are twelve homes based on the. Um, recommendation that, that council accepted, uh, it was, and, and discussions in the. Um, infrastructure committee, it, it's basically any property that, uh, abuts, you know, the ditches is, is part of the. Um, SAD, so we'll, we'll, we'll double check that. Um, and then just also, uh, in the accepted, um. Uh, rec- infrastructure recommendation, um, you know, one of the things that we were, um. Cognizant of is making sure that when we're spending tax dollars, we're spending them. Uh, as wisely as possible and getting the, the, the most bang for the buck out of, out of the tax dollars and, and. Uh, as many of you, uh, heard who attended the infrastructure meetings or council meetings where we discussed it. You know, one of the issues with, with non-functioning ditches, especially, uh, one like Cambridge where they're completely, uh, non-functional and the water doesn't get. Carried away, um, you know, the water seeps under the road and damages the road from underneath, so, um. Uh, long story short, you, you lose, you know, about ten percent, possibly more in a bad situation like this of the life of the road. So, uh, the, you know, council doesn't want to be, um, you know, investing, uh, money that's that where we're not going to get the full and expected life out of the roadway. So one of the things that we had said is in situations like this where the, um, the SAD gets, um, turned down. That the, the city will also move on and not pave that street, uh, and move on to a different street. So that is, that is one of the potential. Uh, re- repercussions associated with this, um. Uh. With, with, with this SAD, so.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Roll call, Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett. Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
And Councilmember Siddiqui.
Yes.
Motion, Carrie.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next, we have the first reading ordinance to amend the city of Lathrow Village Code of Ordinances by adding chapter eighteen, article. Six, is that right? Seven, six, yeah. Cannabis, I was waiting for Bruce for a correction. I can't believe it, um.
Sorry, I'm, I'm slipping. Well, I'm page two ninety-three. It's, it's, it's a long way.
Are we on the budget amendments?
Maybe I, no, uh, I'm in, oh, I'm sorry, no.
Budget amendments.
Sorry, I had it up and fired, ready to go. I was going too fast. Consideration of budget amendment, um. Uh, the fiscal year twenty-twenty, excuse me, twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two ends on June thirtieth. Twenty-twenty-one attached, oh, never mind, just go ahead. Cheryl to introduce it.
Okay, um. This is what we do annually, um, towards the end of June, making the second budget amendment that's more reflective of what we've actually spent. Um, this afternoon, I sent to you an amendment to the amendments. Based on information that we received from the Oakland County Water Resource Commissioner in regards to, um, the. Drumel. Rumel Drain and those cost allocations to us, so. Hopefully what you have on your screen is the modification of those recommended, uh, amendments. And it also includes the DDA, which is doing quite robustly this year.
Thank you. Anyone want to make a motion?
I want a motion to approve the budget amendments that submitted by the city administrator and DDA for the fiscal year twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one. Yeah, this is the wrong dates, right? Twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two budget year ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one.
Actually, it's the twenty-twenty-one because it's the current fiscal year, which ends June thirtieth. Oh, twenty-one, that's.
Twenty-one, yeah. So am I right?
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Roll call, Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Councilmember Siddiqui.
Yes.
And Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
Motion, Carrie.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Now we're at J, first reading ordinance to amend the city of Lathrow Village Code of Ordinances by adding. Chapter eighteen article, I said six, so I'm waiting to again, that correct, Bruce? Article six cannabis.
Yeah.
Um, so.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Who would like to, uh, city attorney probably should introduce this.
Yeah, I can introduce this one. So this was the, the much anticipated. Uh, introduction or for, not really introduction, but first official reading of the cannabis business ordinance for the city of Lathrow Village. This, uh. It was, it was noticed for this evening, although a public hearing is not required because it's a met, it's an amendment to the general ordinance. Uh, our charter requires two readings, so this is the first introduction, not the first time that council has seen this, but it. It is a compilation of comments, concerns, suggestions and input from throughout the process from residents. The city council members as well as planning commissioners and other stakeholders. I don't, although we necessarily need to go through section by section, but, uh, if there are any questions or concerns, happy to address those. I know. Bruce, you've already got at least one question for me, so if there's anyone else, just let me know.
Anyone want to make the motion?
Making a motion to approve the first reading ordinance to the amend, uh, to amend the city of Lathrow Village Code of Ordinance. By adding chapter eighteen active, uh, sick, uh, act, article six, sorry, cannabis business. Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any, um, discussion?
Yeah, so I'll, I'll ask my question that, that I asked, uh, earlier in the study session that we didn't have time to, uh, I get to. Um, for the city attorney, um, in prior discussions, you know, we had, we had talked about the fact that, uh. We would, would allow, uh, in terms of provisioning centers, that we would allow a, a maximum of two provisioning centers in the city. Um, so two actual physical facilities, but we said within that facility, um, we would license, uh, both. Could, could license if, if, uh, accepted applicant, uh, wanted to do that, they could license both medical and. Um, uh, uh, recreational marijuana, so, um, when I, when I read the, the ordinance for tonight's meeting. Um, it wasn't a hundred percent clear to me that that was in there and I just wanted to make sure. Um, that that's accounted for in the, the ordinance that we're approving for the first reading.
But we, we do account for that. We were allowing for a total of two, whether it be in the same location, uh, or two just total. But eighteen, section eighteen dash two-five. Uh, does allow for co-locating facilities, does require that an applicant apply for each. If they were to do an adult use, uh, center as well as a medical center. It would require a separate application for each use, but, but we are proposing to allow co-located facilities.
Right, but if we, but at least, at least the way that I read the ordinance though, if, if they co-Lo, if they co-locate. So if, if, you know, uh, vendor A comes in and says, you know, all right, I, I, and gets, gets approved and they. Co-locate a medical and, and recreational license, to me, the way I, I read the, the ordinance, we're done as a city.
That's correct.
Right, and that's.
And that's accurate. We, uh, eighteen-two-eighty-nine, uh, council directed a maximum of two. Adult, either adult use, two adult-use cannabis retail establishments or medical cannabis provisioning centers, so. It's not two of each, it's two total.
Right, and that, and that I understand, and that's what we, may, maybe there was some confusion in, in the prior, uh, discussion, but, um. You know, what we, wh- what I thought we had concluded in, in, in a prior meeting was that, uh, we would have. Two actual facilities, but those, those facilities could each have a medical and, and, um. Uh, recreational license within them. I mean, it seems silly not to do that because. Um, you know, i- if they're, if they're selling cannabis, first of all, it's going to, you know, allow them to have both customer bases, but. From a city perspective, it, 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 it makes for, uh, you know, more revenue in terms of the, the licensing fees. Because each year they would have the five thousand dollar licensing fee, um. You know, and, and then it potentially brings in, you know, more customers, which would potentially mean more revenue to, to the city. So I, I don't, I don't see why we wouldn't do that, um, which is what we had discussed earlier, so.
Again, it's, it, my interpretation of it and, and. And again, I could change it if, if, if council desires to, but my interpretation of it was, what was that? The city wanted a maximum of two facilities. And, and if they co-locate, then it's, then it's each one is a separate, separate license, counting towards that, that quote of two.
Right, so I guess I'd be interested to hear what, what the other council members. We had discussed that.
It should stay at the two, if that's where we're gonna go, because otherwise you have the potential of four places, right?
No.
Soon as you.
Oh.
No, you have a potential.
Finish what I'm trying to get my thoughts on and then.
Okay, sorry, sorry, apologies. I apologize.
So if you put in that you can get four licenses, and this is to Scott, the city attorney. If you have put in there that you can have four licenses, isn't there a potential to have four different locations?
You're going to allow for two adult-use facilities and two potential ma- medical facilities and, yeah, you, and. You could have the scenario that Bruce is describing where each facility has both adult use or recreational. And medical, or you could have four separate facilities. One, one, you know, two of each type.
Right.
Right, but that could, that could very easily be taken care of in the way that the ordinance is written, so that there are no more than two physical facilities. And, and a given facility could have up to two licenses provided that, you know, one is medical and one is, 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 uh. Uh, recreational, there, there, I mean, there's no way, there's no reason why we couldn't take care of that in the, in the, in the, you know, the writing and the way the ordinance is written.
Yeah, Bruce is right. I don't think we even thought about separating those two. We, we said, um, we're having two locations and in one specific location, you could have two licenses there. Not four different locations.
That, that's how I always understood it as well.
Yeah, right.
The way that I was just asking the city attorney was exactly what I think could, could potentially happen, correct? To Scott Baker.
That, that's correct, yeah. The, so that, that's, that's the big issue is because they are separate. They're entirely separate, even though they may be co-located, they would, they would have to be completely separate businesses, which is why. We were treating them as two separate applications. So in essence, what you're asking for is to allow for four licenses, two, two medical and, and two adult use.
But, but in a maximum of two locations, can we write your ordinance that way?
We, we could, um, the zoning ordinance that we drafted though currently doesn't address medical, it's only, it's only dealing with adult use. So we may have to do some, some modifications to that. Jill, are you still here?
Yes, I'm still here.
Well, keep in mind, we did say that, uh, we wouldn't go any higher than two because of the city size as far as writing the ordinance. So I think Bruce and, uh, Saleem were in line where I think the interpretation was the same, you know, it should be two locations.
Right. And that, and that's, and that's why I brought it up at the last meeting because, or I, I don't know if it was the last meeting or two meetings ago, because when, when I read it, it suddenly dawned on me, well, you know, one of the things that was talked about in the committee was being able to have, um, you know, a, an applicant or a location have both of the licenses, which would generate more revenue for the city. So it seems like we're leaving revenue on the table if we, if we don't do that. And it's also seems to me that, that for an, an applicant who, uh, wants to bring cannabis into a, a retail location, I would think that they're going to want to submit for both of those licenses because they're going to want to expand their customer base as much as possible. It would just be smart business sense.
Would, would you talk, be careful when you talk about revenue, because the only thing the city would derive from a medical facility would be the application fee. There's, there's no sharing of revenue or, or tax, excise tax with, uh, medical facilities.
Right.
And I was just going to ask, uh, mention that same thing, Scott. So you read my mind.
Yeah, I, I, I understand that, but it still is more, more revenue. It's $5,000 a year more revenue.
Well, uh, also just to, I guess, follow up on that too, it shouldn't necessarily be considered straight revenue. Um, because it is intended that that fee is used for administrative, administration and enforcement as it relates to the uses. And it, I, I think it's really a good idea to, as we're thinking about creating this ordinance and creating the mechanism by which these uses are um, reviewed and approved and, and up and running and successful, that we also be, um, aware of how we're keeping track, how the city is keeping track of those funds in case there is something that comes up down the road where the city is asked to, to, um, you know, substantiate those things. So I think that's helpful to have that in the back of your mind that, that that's really what it's to be for.
Yeah. So I'm going to stick with the original statement that I made because we had discussions regarding, uh, the city size and, uh, it was not feasible to have four separate locations. And I think we all discussed, uh, co-locating those licenses in two different locations.
So just to be clear, Ian, I'm, I'm at a hundred percent certain, so you're, 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 are you saying what I was saying where there's.
Yes.
Two, two, two locations without the four licenses.
Right, exactly.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I, I do agree with you, Ian.
So Scott, what does that look like?
Uh, it's, it, we will just, it will require some amendments to the licensing limits, uh, section eighteen dash two eighty nine and, uh, but that it's not a, not a extremely difficult change.
Okay, so I guess.
Could ask for one bit of clarification in regards to this. So what I'm hearing you you indicate is that we're talking two different locations, up to two licenses each. And those two licenses must be the, uh, recreational as well as the medicinal. You can't have the two recreational at the one location.
Correct.
That's right.
Okay.
And we're also going to have to write in because you may not, you may not necessarily, you may get different applicants for a different license, for different licenses and they may score differently on the, the scoring matrix. So they may not necessarily be the same entity receiving both licenses within one facility. So I'll work on that tomorrow and I'll, I'll send a draft over.
So Scott, do I, do I amend my, my, uh, my, my motion? Um, and, and so do we continue with the first reading and just with an amended motion?
Yeah, you could, yeah, because we'll make those changes for the second reading.
Okay, I just have to find it. What, what, what page is it on? I accidentally had my elbow on the page down button.
I believe it's three fourteen.
Three fourteen. Okay, let me get back to it and then I'll remake my motion. Okay, so I, I, I'm going to adjust my motion to approve the first reading of the ordinance to amend the city of Lathar Village Code of Ordinances by adding chapter eighteen, article six, uh, cannabis businesses with the, um, uh, caveat that we, uh, update the language to indicate that, uh, uh, that a maximum of two physical, uh, retail locations are allowed, but those two retail locations can, can have, uh, um, a total of four licenses, two recreational, two, two medical with the, you know, uh, um, additional caveats that, that, uh, we, we just talked about, um, uh, regarding, uh, co-location.
Second.
Moved in seconds. Is there any further discussion about this? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Roll call, Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Councilmember Siddiqui.
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
And Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Motion, Carrie.
Thank you. Next one is the sidewalk real, uh, repair program bid and award of a contract.
Hearing council members, this is in regards to the three-year sidewalk program and our city engineer, Scott Giffles from, I'm sorry, Scott. Scott Ringler from Giffles Webster, um, received six bids and the lowest bid was from KD Cement. And the recommendation is to go with the lowest bid and it's for the two thousand twenty-one sidewalk program with the option to also look at, um, the performance as well as the cost going into years two and three.
Thank you.
And Scott is on the Zoom call as well.
So I'll make a motion to accept two thousand twenty-one sidewalk repair program bids, award of contract to KD Cement and authorize the mayor and order the city administrator to sign the contract and related documents on behalf of the city of Lathar Village. Second.
It's been moved in a second. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, just real quickly, the twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three numbers in there are, are placeholder estimates. Uh, if we're happy with the work in twenty twenty-one and we extend the contract, those, those numbers will get adjusted based upon, you know, the actual number of flags, um, that we determine need to be, um, uh, repaired or replaced.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Roll call, Councilmember Siddiqui.
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Motion, Carrie.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
For consideration for approvals, MDOT Performance Resolution for Municipalities.
This is in relationship to the, um, the relationship with MDOT so that we are on track for getting our permit fees essentially waived. Um, as they are doing, um, construction work. And this came about as part of the conversation with, with the, um, Traffic Enforcement Association and our police department on the bike route to cross eleven mile road at I six ninety-six. We agreed with the residents that probably was not the safest pathway for pedestrians or, um, cyclists. So that route is already in the process of being modified to have them, to have them walk along eleven mile on the sidewalk and then cross over at the, um, the light at Southfield Road. But what you have before you is the request for the performance resolution for municipalities from MDOT. And that, um, is a requirement in order for us to be able to have our future applications, having the, um, the permits processed expeditiously without having to go through a lot of, jumping through a lot of hoops.
Gotcha. So, uh, I'm sorry, we already had the, no, we would take the motion for it? No.
Didn't.
No.
Make a motion to adopt the attached Michigan Department of Transportation for municipalities.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Roll call, Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes, sorry.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor. Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Sorry, dog was barking. I had it unmuted. Yes.
Councilmember.
Yes.
Motion, Carrie.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So for item M, um, we can just squash this, correct?
No, we're, we're moving forward with the one relative to changing the, um, budget dates, the one relative to changing the, um, taxation.
Sorry.
Lines, that one we're not moving forward with.
Okay, so someone wants to introduce that one.
I could do it if. I could do it if, if, uh, Cheryl, you don't want to do it?
Yeah.
No. Right, so, uh, at one of the study sessions, council had requested whether or not, uh, it would be possible to push back the timing that the, for presentation about the budget to city council and adoption of the budget. Uh, that those modifications would, would require a charter amendment. Uh, so what we've, what this is, is this, uh, is the resolution establishing the charter amendment ballot proposal language. Uh, what this is simply doing is, is amending section eight point two of the charter, moving the presentation of the budget to council, which is currently, uh, needs to be done on it before the third Monday of April. It's moving it to the third Monday of May and then section eight point five, which deals with the adoption of the budget. Uh, that, that is moving from the third Monday in Ju, I'm sorry, third Monday in May to the third Monday in June. Uh, what this will do is we'll, we'll present, um, or will provide the staff and administration ti- more time to, uh, receive all the information from various funding sources, uh, and compiling the budget. It's, relaxes the, uh, the timing a little bit and, and makes their lives a little bit easier. So in, on page, I think it's, uh, three fifty-six is what the actual proposed, what the actual ballot proposed language is. So if, if council satisfied with that, there's no modifications, uh, then they would adopt this resolution and, and direct the clerk to submit it. Needs to be submitted to the Attorney General's Office and the Office of the Governor for approval. And then once it comes back, then it would, then it would go, um, to Oakwood County. The, the memo, the memo we hear is dealing with Saco, so it's.
Thank you. Who would like to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the resolution establishing, uh, charter amendment ballot proposal language, uh, for the November second, twenty twenty-one election and instruct the city clerk to transmit a copy of the proposed amendment to the governor of the state of Michigan for approval and transmit a copy of the foregoing statement, uh, of purpose of, of such, such proposed amendment to the attorney general of the state of Michigan for approval as required by law.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Roll call, Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Councilmember Siddiqui.
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
Motion, Carrie.
Thank you. City administrators report.
Thank you. Um, we've had a, um, exciting month already and I just want to thank everyone for all of their participation. And we have staff working a great deal of hours, um, especially this past weekend. We had a wonderful, um, art fair in June teen on celebration. And again, congratulations to all of the diversity, um, champions who were receiving the, um, recognitions as well as the members of the diversity task force who helped pull together the program and special thanks to Suzie Stack and Cory Doll for the, uh, their hard efforts, um, in making sure that everything went smoothly. Despite the rain, the mayor came and waved her magic wand and the rain dissipated. So we were very happy that she used her, her very special powers for the good this time.
Excellent. Excellent.
I want to remind everyone that the, um, the citywide garage sale is this weekend, June twenty-fifth to the twenty-seventh. If you want to get the free signs and, um, be listed, just come to city, um, hall and we'll be help, we, we will be happy to help you with, um, getting signed up for that. And I think those are my main items for today. Oh, fireworks. So fireworks are permitted just before holidays. And for the Fourth of July holiday, our ordinance allows for them from Tuesday, June twenty-ninth through Sunday, July fourth, not on July fifth this year. And only up until, I always put midnight, it's eleven forty-five PM. And we also ask people to be, uh, mindful of pets and those with PTSD and, um, veterans who are often very sensitive to these loud bangs and noises. And no one is permitted to, um, set off the fireworks in the public parks and they cannot be used by, um, minors as well.
Thank you.
And the water service lines, um, replacements started today. There were eight of them. In totality, um, we followed the recommendation of our city engineer, Scott, who said to actually do a physical reinspection on site. You know, everyone was doing their, um, taking a picture and sending it in. Um, but he thought that some of them didn't quite seem like they were really led. So we did have, um, DPS go out and physically look at them themselves. And we did, in fact, determine that a number of them were not led or galvanized still. So we saved a great deal of money in not replacing things that did not need to be replaced. So the list of twenty-something came down to eight. Four of those were completed today and the other four will be completed, um, tomorrow.
Cheryl, has the, um, for the, the excavations that we're doing, have any of those turned up, uh, led?
I have not heard. I, I think I heard of one that did. I have not heard, um, but I'll ask that specific question though.
And do you know how many excavations we've done so far?
They're pretty.
Questions.
Hey, I'm, 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 I'm infrastructure.
Well, you could have, give me some warning, we could have looked it up.
Yeah, you, you don't have to answer now. Just, just, just email, email it to me. I'm just curious.
I know that I, I, when Cory and I were out last week doing our very interesting, uh, bike tour, uh, we ran into some of the guys doing the excavation, it's three man crew, and he said that they typically get about twelve done a day. So.
Lot.
And they should be closing in on completion. The biggest holdup is getting the Miss Dick, um, stakes in the ground more than anything.
Right.
That completes my report. Thank you.
Bernie? Scott?
Nothing for me. Just trying to think how I'm going to make Bruce happy with this marijuana ordinance.
That's what we, we live, we all live for, to make him happy, right?
Hey, I'm just doing my job.
Some might say you're not, but okay. Um, reports of boards, commission, committees.
Yeah. So for the planning commission, um, uh, we've, we've recently approved a site plan for, uh, US Rehab to move into the old, uh, Gin Cleaners Building. Um, obviously we, we approved the site plan and special land use for Discount Tire, which we voted on tonight. Um, we did form a, uh, study group for, uh, building materials. Uh, we had drafted an ordinance and it did get some, um, you know, uh, feedback from the public. And so we decided to, uh, actually form a, a, a study group to, uh, look into it in a little bit more detail. So that's, that's in the process of getting launched. And then, uh, we had the public hearing for the, the zoning text amendments, which we also talked about tonight. So. And then for infrastructure, I don't have anything to report.
Thank you. Um, any unfinished or new business?
I just wanted to mention one thing. Um, we've had a lot of, um, commentary in regards to going back to open meetings because it'll be more transparent and allow on residents to participate. And I just want to say that today we had at least twenty-five people on the Zoom remote meeting. remote meeting, which is more than we typically have at a meeting, um, if that's in person. So I just wanted to take note of that.
Yeah, I saw twenty-nine at one point.
Yeah.
Up to thirty-one.
Yeah. When when usually in meetings, in-person meetings, we have two or three.
Correct. Um, public comment. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Um, Commissioner Yolanda Charles is in the audience. Commissioner, is there anything that you would like to share? I'm sorry.
Hello, am I unmuted?
Yes.
Yep.
Hey, hardworking Lether Village City Council members. I don't wanna take a moment more of your time, since it's already after nine o'clock. I do wanna offer that we have some internships for individuals sixteen years to twenty-four years of age who want to um seek internships in career-oriented positions. I have some information about that, that the county is sponsoring, and I can provide the the website link, which I don't have handy because I was too deep into your meeting. But I do have a phone number where you can send me a quick text, anyone listening, two four eight, three eight five, two nine two seven. And that's again, if you have a sixteen to twenty-four-year-old who's looking to do an intern uh in their career here in Oakland County, we definitely wanna reach, you know, I definitely want our Lether Village students and Lether Village young people to have access to that. So please, by all means, uh, send them my way. Other than that, I'll send my report in email form. I appreciate the time and have a good rest of your week.
Thank you so much. You too.
Thank you for that, appreciate it.
Um, any other public comment?
Interested.
Thank you. Um, mirror and council comments. Um, one, I wanna really give um kudos to both Suzie and um Cory. You did an outstanding job for um our first, hopefully, annual um Juneteenth um celebration. It was um very informative, it was very entertaining. And even though it rained, I think that it was still something that um it 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 touched me and I did get uh feedback from other people that they were very um pleased in what uh Lether Village did. So kudos to you and please share it with um Cory, too.
Thank you very much, I will. And she and I already talked about how we're gonna make next year's event even better. So thank you very much, I appreciate that. We had a lot of fun um ho- organizing it, hosting it, and uh learning a great deal ourselves, so.
Well, great job to both of you, thank you.
And to um also to give kudos to um Scott Wrangler um to suggest to go back around to check um the water lines. That um was huge. And if I'm not mistaken, we had twenty-something, okay. Um, and my house is in one of them and I don't have to get my yard um dug up. So let me give you the real reason why I'm so thankful. Because um I don't have to, you know, be stressed out about that, but that was huge also. And thank um, thank him for saving the city um some money.
About sixty-five thousand dollars.
Thank you, so.
That's great.
And then also what I would like to do at some point is to have a um, I don't know, a a letter of recognition or something for um Donna Stallings because um this was her pa- her passion. Um, regardless if, you know, you agreed with with her uh votes or not. Um, this was her passion and she was for um her residents. So um, I think that it would be appropriate for us to give her some type of um resolution. As we started precedents, you know, I I know he, she wasn't here as long as Frank was, but still, we started precedence of acknowledging people that have served longer than um one, one term. It was something else that I wanted to say, oh, um, Wednesday um is the State of the City address. We're going back to being in public or being face-to-face. Um, it is um at eleven o'clock uh Wednesday, June twenty-third. Um, we do have a table, but it's only a table of six. So uh if you are interested, please let Cheryl know um about it. Um, I will be presenting. Jim put together a very lovely video that will take up the majority of my time. And um, it 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 should be good, we did the run-through this morning. Um, I'm trying to think of anything else. Oh, one thing that I have noticed, and maybe it's, you know, just something that I just wanted to make sure that we all were in this, understanding this and to also let the residents hear it. So with all the trucks and cars that are um parked on the street, that's not normal. It's just to be a little courteous to allow if the side that you're on has something blocking your lane, to wait for the person who does not have an obstructed lane. I think that's the law, but I could be mistaken. But I've seen near misses already happening um over on Bloomfield Drive. Yeah, big time over there. Go ahead, Scott, looks like you wanna say something about that.
Say your your uh summary of the law is pretty accurate. If there's something in your lane, you have to wait till opposing traffic is not present to pass it, so.
It it's, it was, it has been questionable, so um, just to reiterate that. And then also Cheryl, this is in in um I'm also thinking, if there was a way to say, cause I know that especially like with my street, and I'm not being, you know, self-righteous or self, you know, focused on this, but I'm just thinking long-term, is that perhaps when we're starting to do other streets where you can't park in your driveway to alert people to park on one side of the street opposed to both sides, especially if the street is very narrow. Because those are near misses also that I'm watching with. Uh, for some reason, our male lady is real, real, excuse the word, pissed off because the way she's flying down these streets with cars on both sides is also um scary to watch. That's just my, my thoughts, I don't know if you can do it or not, but. What'd you say?
So we can always suggest it, definitely.
Yeah. I think that that's pretty much all that I have.
Yeah, I just wanna echo your comments for 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 Saturday uh to uh Cory and Suzie. That was a great way to spend four hours, just next year, pick a day that uh doesn't rain, so we can get more people there to enjoy it.
When the drum started, the sun came out.
I, they um, they said that they performed at like seven other events that day. And every time it stopped raining right before they got on, so. They did the.
Go first, welcome next year to go first.
They start up right after they leave.
It's all day long in the background.
Right.
Thank you, Bruce, we appreciate it.
Anyone else?
Just for fun, I want to add that um, that drum group also plays and teaches with the school across the lot from me. So it's not as endearing at seven thirty in the morning.
Is that kinda like the trucks that drive in at seven o'clock in the morning that I? All right, yes, yeah.
Uh, just kudos to Suzie and and Lauren. Cory, Cory, sorry, I'm thinking Lauren, Cory, I appreciate it. Yeah, it was well organized and uh we had a really good turnout. We had a good level of diversity in there also, so thank you.
Anyone else? Hearing none, uh, take someone to give a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
You all have a great night.
Thank you. Good night.
Night.